Will the Committee of the Whole for Wadsworth City Council Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 at 5:45, please come to order. Will we quick, please take the roll.
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
And Yurichak?
Here.
Go ahead, a chance to review the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting for September 17th, I'll accept the motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention, very good. Next item on the agenda is an executive session.
Mr. President, I move that we hold an executive session for a conference with the Director of Law concerning disputes involving this public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
Second.
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Williams? Yurichak?
Yes.
We are now in executive session. Okay, the next item will be discussion on amending council rule number 23. It's a council rule, so it's up to us. Is there any discussion from any council members?
The only thing I would like to see in the first sentence, "When evaluating petitions for annexations except for annexations of city-owned land, city council shall or may consider it," I would like to see the word "shall" totally removed from this rule.
Just remove that?
Just remove the word "shall" and put "may." That's my thought.
I agree with that. Does the administration have any?
You're talking to us.
Oh. I was gonna say if they had any issues with changing that word.
No.
And also legally, is that allow us leeway? You know, because guided is still in there, but it says "may be, may, may consider and be guided." Does that give us the leeway to have some leeway in our discretion compared to the master plan?
Yeah, obviously, there's a distinct difference between "shall" and "may."
Yeah.
That's why I want it out of there.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion from council members?
Yeah, I believe Tom was gonna write up a couple different iterations, and then, I mean, when he gets something, we can easily read it and amend it on the floor. I just, I mean, I know there's a developer wanting to come forward, so. Yeah, that.
Any problem doing that tonight?
No.
Mr. Proudfoot, is there something you can amend for us, the language, so we can take action on it?
You want to do that this evening?
Yes.
I don't know where, so may I ask a question here regarding, I see what we have here, and I see the red lines and the red writing in here. What all has been changed? Are you accepting all the changes, or you're just wanting only "shall" replaced with "may"? Because I wasn't part of that, and I don't have access to that Word document. I know Tom was doing that at the time. Tom Morris. So I don't know if you're wanting to accept the red changes as well?
What was he gonna do, John?
So he was gonna, he was gonna basically put the legislation forward with a couple different iterations, and then we were gonna read the one of our, discuss them, and then read the one of our choosing, but I don't have those to.
Is it the only, the one word that you would like changed, Mr. Copley?
Yes, I agree.
I just don't want the word "shall" in there. I think it should be "may."
Everything else you're okay with?
Yeah.
Because I recall that was discussion, and that was the only thing we're gonna change. Again, this isn't legislation, this is just a council rule, so we can do that right now.
So I have one other minor thing. In the third paragraph, the first sentence, "When the clerk of council receives a copy of petition for annexation," it should probably be he slash she. I mean, at some point, we might have a he as a council, as a clerk of council.
Put he in there.
I don't think we should always, he slash she.
How about they? They will discuss.
Well, we can do that as a line item. Can we not, Mr. Proudfoot?
I don't see why you couldn't just propose.
Yeah, it's just a council rule.
Yeah, just, it's a council rule. You could propose an amendment to Rule 23 and simply state in line one, replace "shall" with "may," and then in paragraph three, replace "she" with "he slash she" or "they."
Why don't we just put there, "The clerk will discuss it with the economic development department." Just put the clerk.
There you go.
And all that kind of stuff.
Very good.
I mean, I don't see why, you can make a verbal change.
Yeah, we can do that.
To those, and then you could have the clerk adjust that and add those to the rules tonight.
So do we do that at our regular council meeting?
Yep.
Yes, you would do it in the regular council meeting, not in Committee of the Whole.
I have no objection to the rest of the changes, the red.
I'm sorry, I missed.
I have no objections to any of the rest of the changes in red either.
I didn't.
Okay.
So I'm assuming what's proposed here, this was, this was what Tom had given everyone or had passed on, so the red changes, so accepting, just to verify, so we're gonna accept all of the changes that are in red, and the only other change that we would do is in the third paragraph, first sentence, replace "she" with "the clerk will discuss it with."
Yeah.
Okay.
And drop the word "shall."
And there's also some line-throughs there as well on the second page, just to verify that that's what you guys want done.
Sure.
Okay.
So then.
Mr. Copley, you are saying drop "shall," and it should just say "may."
May.
Just say "may," yeah. Council may consider.
Yes, strike "shall."
What's that?
Strike "shall" and replace it with the word "may."
Do you want to do that?
Not "shall" or "may," just "may."
Yeah, correct. My only question is, is we're gonna, we're not, we're not gonna have a new document in front of us. We need to amend that on the floor, right? Or?
Yeah, I mean, we can just amend this.
I can amend it.
Pencil it.
Bring it in.
We'll read it, and that's the new.
She's got the Word document.
Yeah, I'm, that's my belief. You have the Word document, so you can make these changes, accept them, and make the change, and then put it in front. Correct.
We'll do that. And that's right after, or right before the proclamation. We'll do that one.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so draft legislation, we got a resolution in front of us, 24-10, about annexations. Mr. Yurichak, I believe that'll probably be you.
I mean, Tom's not here to speak on it, so I don't know what we.
If I could, can I interrupt?
Do you want to talk to it?
Sure. So Tom had given me a memo and briefly spoke to me here about this annexation. So this annexation is, it's a type 1 annexation, so essentially what's occurring is, you have a homeowner who wants to extend the first floor of their property out, but however, when they extend it out, it's another parcel that they own, however, that parcel's in Wadsworth Township. So what this is doing, this resolution, it's authorizing the mayor to be able to enter into an agreement with the township, accept that parcel, and that becomes one big parcel. And the biggest part of this is, under a type 1 annexation like this, you have to compensate the township for revenue lost on that, the taxes. So it's authorizing the mayor to enter into this, and for the city to make a one-time payment of, I think it was $5,000 some odd dollars that's listed in there, to compensate Wadsworth Township. And that's what it is.
And this was discussed in economic development and planning, so.
And the property's landlocked, there's nothing else that you're with it, right?
So, I mean, I would recommend suspending and calling and just get it done with.
That'll be resolution number 24-10.
Okay. Next one, you want to speak on that, Mr. Testa?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Over the past, really, probably three years, the city had submitted proposals for various park projects throughout the city. In total, we received approximately $1.4 million in grants that are being administered by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. We've progressed to the point where the grant agreements are ready to be developed, so this legislation would authorize the interim service director to enter into those agreements to accept the funds.
Okay. Is there a timeline on that?
There is not.
So I think he went to number three.
Yeah, he went to number four.
I think he talked about number three. Number two.
Yeah. I can.
I misspoke then.
If he did talk about number two, he talked about number three.
Number two.
Number two.
Number two's, Kath.
Number two is the annual resolution from the county to accept the rates. We don't have any new levies, so it's really just a.
Just a housekeeping.
Housekeeping to approve those. We have until November 1st to send those back to the county, so they could go to ratings.
Two ratings, okay. Ms. Hines, you want to take that?
Sure.
Now we're on number three. Any questions for?
What's the number on that?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. That's resolution 24-11.
Yeah, and let's move that to second, don't you think? Next one's ordinance number 24-107, and that's what you were talking about?
No, this is the, actually, the internal notes.
Okay.
The next one, number three.
It goes along with that.
I think Mike was speaking to number four.
Mike was speaking to the ODNR.
So these are our annual internal notes. We've only, we're only presenting the 30 renewals of prior year notes. The interest rate is 3.5%. You'll see that the newer notes are all 10 years or less, and less than $750,000.
And they're still 3.5?
The rate for the coming year is 3.5.
3.5.
Yes, yes. So, any questions on those?
Nope. Mr. Parrish, you want to take that one?
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna move that to second, or we're gonna call?
It's up to you. Julie will.
You sure have to read them every time?
She'll read them every time, or it's housekeeping, and you can adopt them all this evening. So what I'm, with your approval, I'm gonna read all 30, and then council can vote as a whole, if that's okay. So we can go three, it's up to you.
I'll move to call.
How many times you want to go through?
All right, that's fine. That's very good. Now we're into 24-140, or let's see. Yes, that's on the revolving loan. That would be item 11 on the agenda. Who would like to speak on that?
Are they, are you, are we on the ODNR grants? Is that where we're on?
No, we're on number 11.
Number 11.
Number 11. Okay.
It's a loan fund administration agreement?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Okay.
This is something that we've had prior. I'm sorry.
Is there a question?
Yes.
We were just trying to figure out, 4 through 10, what we're doing and how we're handling it. I know Mr. Testa spoke a bit, we didn't know what we were doing as far as on calling, or who's taking care of that.
What the numbers are.
Okay.
Oh, on 4 through 10?
4 through 10.
Okay.
Yeah, we were just trying to get back to that.
It looks like pretty much parks, so that would be you.
Okay.
And that's gonna be starting.
Mr. Rosberg.
Do we have, we're gonna read all those, just suspend and call all those also?
Yeah.
Do you want me to read them all at once? Okay. That's gonna start 24-137, 138, 139, 140, 141, 142, and 143.
Okay. That moves us to item number 11. And that's the revolving loan fund.
Yeah, and I can speak to that. That's through economic development, and I briefly spoke to Tom, and I actually reviewed this. We've, we've executed this economic development revolving loan fund agreement multiple times over the years. I think 2017 was the last year. It's essentially, it's just what you, what it says. It's a revolving loan fund that you can use for whatever economic development purposes are there. This is the same format from the 27, or 2017 ordinance that we had passed, and it begins, the term actually began at the beginning of the year, so I think in this instance, if we're gonna utilize this fund, I would ask that you suspend and call on this, if you don't mind.
Mr. Yurichak, that would be you.
Okay.
And that'll be 24-144.
Next item is number 12, and that's doing, it has a lot to do with our water rates. Mr. Testa?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The last time the city raised its water rates was in the first quarter of 2021. Water rates were raised simply by a letter put together by the service director outlining what the new rates would be. We're now a few years later, we've gone through some inflation, and we've had an opportunity, really, to put together for the first time a comprehensive capital plan for the city, and in particular, 15-year capital plans for the water and sewer systems. So both of those systems have a treatment plant, and either a collection or distribution system, which is basically the underground pipes for, for either distributing the water or collecting the sewage from homes and businesses. As part of that capital budget project process, we also submitted the capital projects' costs and timelines to the consultants that were working on rate studies for the city. So every three to five years, we typically hire a consultant that performs what's known as a cost-of-service study, although we typically refer to it as a rate study, and what it's designed to do is look at our operating costs and our capital needs, and then determine what rates we need to charge in order to cover the expenses that we have on the horizon, invest in the systems at the minimum level they need to be invested in, and maintain, basically, enough of a rainy day fund that, you know, should something unexpected happen, we would be able to address that in a timely manner. With regard to the water and sewer capital plans, together, there are approximately $230 million of costs over the next 15 years. Roughly $150 million of that relates to water projects, either for the water treatment plant or the water distribution network, and then about $80 million for the sewer infrastructure, including the treatment plant and the collection system. What you have before you is a legislation request that's based on those rate study results and the capital projects that were underpinning the studies, and the recommendation is that we raise rates effective December 1st of 2024 to the new levels that are outlined there. So in very simplistic terms, the water rate increase would be about 38% over current rates, and the sewer rate increase is about 8.5%. And one of the documents that I passed out to council shows what the current rates are, what the new rates would be, and how that would impact users of different levels of water use. I can say that, on average, the average residential unit probably uses about 4,000 gallons a month. Their cost would go up approximately $11. So all of the increases taken together for an entire year would add about $137 to the average homeowner's utility bill. And again, that's for both water and sewer for the entire year. Questions?
We discussed this in service.
We did.
And had a special meeting as well on this, and had.
And I'd just like the residents to know that we're gonna look at this again next year, because originally, it was a three-year proposal for three, you know, three different increases, but we decided that we're gonna hold off till, and revisit it every year, and review the capital plan and everything to make sure that we're on the right track.
Yeah, very good reasoning. Any other questions? Mr. Stugmeyer?
Yeah, I will move this to second.
That'll be 24-145.
And the next one as well, it's on the sewer study, sewer rates. Item number 13.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, move that one to second.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah. One.
That'll be 24-146.
146, okay, both of those.
That brings us to city council agenda review. The first resolution, 24, resolution 24-08 needs to be amended, I'm told. Proudfoot?
Yeah, so this was brought to our attention that the Exhibit A that listed the items that were gonna be auctioned out, it didn't have everything on there. So those were added on, so all we simply need to do is amend the resolution 24-08 to include the revised Exhibit A. And then you can proceed after that, you know, it's on second reading, so if you're moving it to third, or if you're gonna suspend and call. So it's as simple as that. But that's, that's the reason why it needs amended.
Okay.
What would you like to do?
Yeah, I'll do that, move it to third. Do the, make the amendment and.
Any, anybody, any thought about suspending and calling, getting this stuff on the open market?
I mean, that's fine with me, too. We originally said to go three, but I'm, I'm fine, we might as well get.
We might as well get our money. If we can sell things, get it, get rid of it, get it off our inventory, get it off our books, and get it back. So I would, I would like to see it suspended.
Yeah, if you don't think that's a good idea, please speak up.
I'm not in favor of suspending rules.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm not either.
Well, let's move it to the third reading.
All right.
Okay, but we will amend it.
Amend it, amend it for the Exhibit A, and I'll get the exact wording of what to say.
Yeah, I'd pass that along to Julie, and so simply just to make the amendment.
All right.
To second, and vote on it, and then you move it, you know, then you go right, and then you move it to the third reading.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next resolution on the sidewalk program. Mr. Parrish?
Yes, sir.
What would you like to do with that?
Move it to the next.
Move it to third reading?
Yes, please.
Okay. And the next one as well.
Yes.
About the third reading?
Yes.
Any questions on any of these? We have another ordinance, Mr. Yurichak, that's on third reading. We have to have a meeting on that.
I don't think that one needs a public meeting.
I'm sorry?
We have, I don't think that one has a public hearing.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, 96 does.
Somebody cut off the top of that.
That's all right. What would you like to do on that?
I'll call it.
Call?
Okay.
And Mr. Stugmeyer, 24-093?
Mr. Testa, do you want to give us an update on that? We kept moving that down with the amount and with the negotiations on those, on those charges?
Yep, and the recommendation would be just to move this to the fifth reading. So what we found out was that we were being overcharged, more specifically, in, on the Visa rates that we were being charged. The reason that we were being overcharged is because Tyler Payments, who is the new processor, the new vendor, that owns the E-Suite platform, had failed to provide some information to Visa when they set up our account. So in essence, Visa did not know that we were a government basically accepting credit card and debit card payments for utility bills, and therefore, they charged us a much higher general rate. Based on some back-of-the-envelope calculations, that rate was about 10 times higher than it should have been on a particular set of transactions. When I talked to Tyler a couple of weeks ago, they had said, "Look, we made a mistake. We're going to give you a $50,000 credit." I have asked them to provide information that would allow me to recalculate that credit. They've now provided it to me. I'm in the process of going through all of those details. Once I finish with that, I will also ask the auditor and the treasurer to go through it and confirm the accuracy of the calculations. The next time that we would be charged fees for the processing of these credit and debit cards, and any checks, would be this week, but we have asked them to apply a credit to that, so there is no charge to us, which is why it's timeliness is not of the essence at this point. By the time we would meet again for public service, which would be on the 21st of this month, we should have all of those calculations done, and have either confirmed their accuracy and the credit amount was correct, or determined that it wasn't correct, and be able to say, "Here's what our follow-up actions are going to be to address the situation."
Okay, and at that point, then, we would know whether to, whether we could lower this amount in this.
That's correct.
All right, we'll move that to fifth then.
Okay, very good. I'd just like to make a comment. I wanted to compliment the Public Service Committee and council and administration for keeping your eye on the ball, and trying to save our citizens.
Thank you.
Very good job. Next item, that's the hearing. Mr. Yurichak, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I'll move it to fifth due to the public hearing.
Okay. And the next one is yours, too?
Fifth, same reason.
Same reason, yeah. And it brings us to ordinance 24-090.
Sixth reading, same reason, public hearing.
Okay, moving along. Mr. Testa has asked for a little bit of time to talk about the budget.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I passed out two documents when we finished the executive session. One was the rate examples that showed what the water and sewer rate increases would look like based on different usage levels. I also passed out what really serves as the introductory section of our annual budget book. So this year's a little bit unique in that our first council meeting falls on Tuesday, October 1st. So what's unique about that is typically, we present the budget overview and then begin reviewing budgets the following week during the Public Ways Committee meeting. Just with the way the calendar falls this year, we've actually got two weeks in between the normal presentation and when we would begin reviewing the capital and operating budget items. So you should have a PDF version of the budget book this week. We're close to finishing it, but I would like to make sure everything reconciles with the auditor's office on everything that we have in there, and we're pretty close. So I anticipate that you guys will have that copy this week, and you should have the printed budget book around the middle of next week. So you'll actually receive that a few days earlier than you typically do. Included in the introductory letter that I provided is a basic outline of what the review calendar will look like over the next two months. In particular, the capital budgets for the Service Department will be the focus of our October meetings, so we'll talk about capital projects related to public ways and public service in October. In November, we'll talk about the operating budgets for public service. One thing that Matt does a little bit different with public safety is that he combines his discussions on the operating and capital budgets, but splits them by division or unit. So in October, he will present the operating and capital budgets for the Police Department. In November, he'll present the operating and capital budgets for the Fire and EMS units. From a legislative standpoint, our plan would be to introduce the budget ordinance at the first meeting in November. Most likely, it'll be November 6th, just because of the election date falling on a Tuesday. The second reading of that ordinance would be the second meeting of November, November 19th, and then typically, the third reading is when council votes to approve or the budget. That'll be. That'll be December 3rd. Along with the budget ordinance, we will also present the wage scale ordinances according to that same schedule. So you'll receive the budget and the wage scale ordinance for the first reading, November 6th, second reading on the 19th, and then the third reading on December 3rd. One of the things that's unique about this budget is that it's the first one that really incorporates a comprehensive capital plan. So in previous years, capital projects were largely tracked just by what went into the budget. It's a little bit different now because in essence we've kind of got two different documents. We have the Capital Improvement Plan, that's the 15-year plan of, of basically what's needed. A subset of that plan is what actually makes it into the budget request for the following year. As we've done in the past, you'll be able to see all of the fund balances, all of the financial data for each of the proposals. And then we've also, will separate a section on all of the capital projects, so you can see all of those together. Other than that, you can expect that the budget book will be in the same format, the same order. It will include both the bookmarks and linked table of contents for the PDF version and the spiral-bound, printed on two sides, print version for council. And I will likely email the PDF version to council this week and then provide the hard copy books in your mailboxes next week.
Very good. Questions? No? Anything else from administration? Anything from council members? I just want to make one quick, you know, going along with the budget, you know, the next couple of months, we all have different committee meetings. Invite everybody to attend as many of those you can, so that you can also listen to what's going on in the committees that you're not on, but also ask questions if you do have questions in those committees. That's the only comment I have. Seeing nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
You're moved.
We adjourn. It's Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, at 6:30. Will the Wadsworth City Council please come to order? First item's Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, who has given us this good land to be our heritage, we acknowledge our dependence upon you for all things, and we thank you for all your blessings, including the right and privilege to govern ourselves in this free land. We pray that you would grant us all wisdom to make good decisions for the future of this community. To Christ our Lord we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The clerk please call the roll.
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Rossbert?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Yurcheck?
Here.
You've all had a chance to review the council minutes from September 17th, 2024. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention. Minutes are approved. As we've discussed, there's a motion, we'd like to have a motion to amend council rule number 23. Mr. Yurcheck?
Mr. President, I would move to make a motion to amend council rule 23 that's before you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Council rule number 23 has been changed. At this time, we have a proclamation from the mayor. Come forward.
Mr. President. The next week, we'll, we'll be celebrating Public Power Week and as I'm preaching to the choir here, as all of us are aware, the tremendous benefit that it is for us to have our own public power. Wadsworth is unique. We're only one of approximately 2,000 communities across the country that have their own electric. And we certainly have benefited from a reliability standpoint, a, let's say, timeliness, and also because of cost. We've been able to benefit from those things. I can tell you in my shoes, I've, I've had countless times where a business owner has been very, very grateful to the city because of our public power and be, because we're able to be so responsive, so they're very grateful for it. It happens to coincide. You notice that Mr. Hiscock is not here today, and I generally am not here, but I thought we probably should have a few from the administration here. But there's a conference that is going on right now that's for public power, and so he's there along with several from our electric. I'm grateful to have Mr. Testa, our Assistant Service Director, here to represent and obviously has a lot of connection with our electric division in collaboration with our communications. So without any further ado, I'll present this proclamation that states, "Whereas we, the citizens of Wadsworth, place high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled, not-for-profit electric utility, and as consumers and owners of our electric utility have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas Wadsworth Electric and Communication provides our homes, businesses, social services, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity and communications employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. And whereas Wadsworth Electric Communications has also taken on additional stewardship for our community's information infrastructure through a broadband network providing internet, cable TV, home area network, and telephone services, expanding community and economic development oper, operations. And now therefore be it resolved that Wadsworth Electric and Communications will continue to work to bring lower-cost, safe, reliable electricity and communication services to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1916, the year when the utility was created to serve all the citizens of Wadsworth. Be it further resolved that I, Mayor Robin L. LaVaux, deem it a pleasure to proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2024, to be designated Public Power Week in the city of Wadsworth. Signed and sealed this first day of October, 2024. Robin L. LaVaux, Mayor of Wadsworth." Did you want to say that?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, on behalf of our electric department, you know, these guys in, in House genuinely take pride in what they do. You know, one of the things that I hear from even the rank-and-file folks is that they appreciate being able to focus on service instead of, you know, a stockholder or the profits of an owner. And we have some people that come to us after having worked for folks that do, you know, get their electricity from a stockholder-owned utility. One of the things that is just recent and maybe the last six weeks, we saw the difference that that service makes. We had a little bit about a cheer, but we get everybody up and running again almost immediately, and you saw news articles or news stories about some areas that were without power for several days. So I will share this with the folks that do the work and just know that they're very appreciative of this recognition and take a lot of pride in serving our residents and our customers and will continue to do so. Thank you.
And if you would pass along that council's very appreciative of what they do.
I absolutely will. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, that brings us to the visitors portion. Does anyone in the audience like to speak? We'll move along to correspondence and correspondence.
No correspondence?
Very good. Moves us to commissions and committees. Public Service Committee, Mr. Stugmeyer.
Yeah, the Public Service Committee will next meet on Monday, October the 21st, 5:30 PM here in council chambers.
Very good. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Copley.
Next meeting in public safety will be on Wednesday, October the 9th, at 6 o'clock PM here in council chambers.
Public Ways Committee, Mr. Rossbert.
Yes, Public Ways will next meet on Monday, October 14th, here in council chambers at 6 o'clock.
Economic Development Planning, Mr. Yurcheck.
Economic Development and Planning Committee will next meet on October 14th in council chambers at 5 PM.
Very good. Committee of the Hold met tonight at 5:45. Airport Commission, Mr. Stugmeyer.
Airport Commission will hold our next meeting on Wednesday, November the 13th, 4:30 PM here in council chambers.
I believe you met last night as well? Any, anything to report from that?
We had some discussions last night on the, the hangar situation and a couple of ways to move forward, move forward with that. And engineering was here and updated the, the commission on the projects that were going on out there as well.
Very good. Sounds like a good meeting. Stormwater Commission, Mr. Copley.
Next meeting in Stormwater Commission will be on Monday, October 21st, prior to the Public Service Committee meeting at 5 o'clock PM here in council chambers.
That might be a good one for us all to attend. Shade Tree Commission, Ms. Hines.
The Shade Tree Commission will meet on Tuesday, October 22nd, at 5 o'clock here in council chambers, and that may be our last meeting of the year until 2025.
Okay. Any good discussion during the last committee?
They are getting ready to plant, replant all the replacements that we need. Planting will take place this fall.
Okay, very good. Planning Commission will meet Monday, October 14th, at 7 PM in council chambers. Cemetery Board, Mr. Yurcheck.
Cemetery Board will next meet on Wednesday, October 9th, at 5 PM in council chambers.
Cable TV Commission, Ms. Hanlon.
The Cable TV Commission meets this Thursday at 4 o'clock in council chambers.
Is there any updates from your last commission meeting?
Well, we talked a lot about the fiber optic projects and how that was on schedule, and then we also talked about the streaming services.
Yes.
Which at that last meeting, those were just, just going live. And, you know, what a big advantage that will be for people and encourage people to check into that.
Any data about how many people are switching, you know, from cable to streaming?
It was too new at that time. I'm sure we'll find out on Thursday.
Probably after this next one?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Senior Citizens Commission, Mr. Parrish.
Yes, the Senior Citizens Commission meets this next Monday, the 7th, at 3:30 PM, and we're in the Suprema Senior Center.
Okay. Also, Tuesday, the 15th of October, at 6:30 PM, there's a public hearing on a zoning change for riparian zoning setbacks and also amending zoning codes. So that takes us to the reading of legislation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We're going to start with first reading this evening. Resolution number 24-10 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurcheck and discussed at Economic Development and Planning. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Wadsworth to enter into an agreement with the township of Wadsworth, Ohio Pursuit and RC Code 709-1, or Point 192, for the purpose of entering an annexation agreement and modifying the payment provisions of RC 709.19 related to the annexation of Medina County, Ohio Parcel Number 038-17B-20-034.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the three-reading rule on resolution number 24-10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President, I move to call the question on resolution number 24-10.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Yurcheck's proposal to call the question on ordinance number...
Resolution number 24-10.
Resolution number 24-10.
Who'll call the question?
I just called.
You did. Okay.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Resolution 24-10 has been adopted.
Amended resolution number 24-11 on first reading, sponsored by Councilmember Jeanie Hines and discussed at committee of the hold. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. President, I move to place amended resolution number 24-11 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution number 24-11 has been placed on second reading.
And the next 30 ordinances, 24-107 through 24-136, our annual housekeeping legislation, are all on first reading, co-sponsored by Council President Dave Williams and David Parrish. At council's request, I will read the 30 ordinances straight through, and council will act on them as a group. Ordinance number 24-107, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2011 storm water improvement and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-108, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purposes of financing the 2012 storm water improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-109, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purposes of financing the 2012 Brookwood Lift Station and Forest Main Street sanitary sewer and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-110, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purposes, for the purpose of financing the 2012 water distribution improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-111, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2010 storm water improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-112, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds for the purposes of financing the 2011 water distribution improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-113, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purposes of financing the 2012 water plant generator and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-114, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purposes of financing the 2011 electrical, electric capital improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-115, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2013 storm water improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-116, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2013 water distribution improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-117, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2013 water plant improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-118, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2012 airport land acquisition and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-119, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of an issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2013 outdoor pool and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-120, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2015 storm water improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-121, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2014 water distribution improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-122, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2021 WWTP blended sludge tank rehab and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-123, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation for, of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2021 State Street staging area culvert and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-124, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2021 Seville Road culvert of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2021 Seville Road culvert and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-125. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2022 street equipment and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-126. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2022 Southwest parking lot improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-127. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2021 State Route 57 waterline project and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-128. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation for the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2022 de-watering station and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-129. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2023 backhoe for sewer and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-130. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2023 backhoe for water and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-131. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation for the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2023 Wolf Avenue improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-132. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2023 telecom improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-133. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2009 water system improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-134. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2004 Rogues Hollow well and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-135. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2006 Valley View substation improvement and declaring an emergency. And our last one, ordinance Number 24-136. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2021 Baker Valley View waterline and declaring an emergency.
Well done, Ms. Arlington.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule for ordinances Number 24-107 through 24-136.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance Number 24-107 through 24-136.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Parrish's, uh, motion to call the question, or proposal to call the question on ordinances Number 24-107 through 24-136. Move, take a roll call vote.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
And Parrish.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 24-107 through 24-136 has been adopted.
And so our next seven ordinances are on first reading regarding OD and R grant agreements. I will read the seven ordinances straight through, and council will act on them as a group. Ordinance Number 24-137 on first reading, these are all sponsored by Councilmember Dan Rosberg and discussed at Committee of the Hold. An ordinance authorizing and directing the interim Director of Public Service to execute and file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance under the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement, providing all information and documentation required to become eligible for said possible funding, agreeing to obligate the funds required to satisfactorily complete the proposed Sterling Park improvements and become eligible for reimbursement under the item, under the terms of the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-138. An ordinance authorizing and directing the interim Director of Public Service to execute and file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance under the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement, providing all information and documentation required to become eligible for said possible funding, agreeing to obligate the funds required to satisfactorily complete the proposed freed park improvements and become eligible for reimbursement under the terms of the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-139. An ordinance authorizing and directing the interim Director of Public Service to execute and file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance under the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement, providing all information and documentation required to become eligible for said possible funding, agreeing to obligate the funds required to satisfactorily complete the proposed Memorial Park improvements and become eligible for reimbursement under the terms of the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-140. An ordinance authorizing and directing the interim Director of Public Service to execute and file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance under the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement, providing all information and documentation required to become eligible for said possible funding, agreeing to obligate the funds required to satisfactorily complete the proposed Pocket Park improvements and become eligible for reimbursement under the terms of the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-141. An ordinance authorizing and directing the interim Director of Public Service to execute and file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance under the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement, providing all information and documentation required to become eligible for said possible funding, agreeing to obligate the funds required to satisfactorily complete the proposed safety town improvements and become eligible for reimbursement under the terms of the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 24-142. An ordinance authorizing and directing the interim Director of Public Service to execute and file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance under the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement, providing all information and documentation required to become eligible for said possible funding, agreeing to obligate the funds required to satisfactorily complete the proposed Valley View Park improvements and become eligible for reimbursement under the terms of the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement and declaring an emergency. 24-143. An ordinance authorizing and directing the interim Director of Public Service to execute and file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance under the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement, providing all information and documentation required to become eligible for the said possible funding, agreeing to obligate the funds required to satisfactorily complete the proposed Weatherstone Park improvements and become eligible for reimbursement under the terms of the Capital Improvement Community Park Recreation and Conservation Project passed through grant agreement and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinances Number 24-137 through 24-143.
Second.
Hines?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes. Mr. President, I call the question on ordinances Number 24-137 through 24-143.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Rosberg's proposal to call the question. Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance numbers 24-137 through 24-141.
143.
143.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Ordinances Number 24-137 through 24-143 has been adopted.
And we have ordinance Number 24-144 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurcheck and discussed at Committee of the Hold. An ordinance authorizing the execution of an Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Administration Agreement with the state of Ohio, Ohio Department of Development and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance Number 24-144.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
And Yurcheck?
Yes. Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance Number 24-144.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Yurcheck's proposal to call the question. Uh, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance Number 24-144?
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
And Rosberg?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 24-144 has been adopted.
Ordinance Number 24-145 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at Public Service. An ordinance to amend Section 54.23 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Wadsworth with regard to water service rates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to place ordinance Number 24-145 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance Number 24-145 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance Number 24-146 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at Public Service. An ordinance to amend Sections 53.35, 53.37, and 53.38 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Wadsworth to increase sewer rates and declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to place ordinance Number 24-146 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance Number 24-146 has been placed on second reading.
And we'll move to second readings. We have Resolution Number 24-08 on second reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer and discussed at Public Service. A resolution authorizing the sale of various items of personal property by internet auction pursuant to Resolution 24-02 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to amend Resolution Number 24-08 to accept revised Exhibit A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President, I make a motion to move Resolution Number 24-08 to third reading. Amended, amended Resolution 24-08 to third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Amended Resolution Number 24-08 has been moved to third reading.
And Resolution Number 24-09 on second reading sponsored by Councilmember David Parrish and discussed at Public Waste. A resolution declaring the necessity of repairing, replacing, or constructing certain sidewalks in the city of Wadsworth, requiring that abutting property owners repair, replace, or construct same, and declaring an emergency.
In the interest to let the citizens comment on this some more, I'm going to move this to third reading. So, Mr. President, I would like to move this to third, Resolution 24-09 to third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution Number 24-09 has been moved to third reading.
Ordinance Number 24-105 on second reading sponsored by Councilmember David Parrish and discussed at Public Waste. An ordinance to provide for the issuance of a bond in anticipation of the collection of special assessments heretofore levy to pay the property owner's portion of the cost of the 2022 through 2023 sidewalk program.
Mr. President, I move the Resolution 24-0105 be moved to third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance Number 24-105 has been moved to third reading.
We have ordinance Number 24-099 on third reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurcheck and discussed at Committee of the Hold. An ordinance accepting approximately 0.4, 0.0427 acres of right-of-way of College Street, and vacating approximately 0.0474 acres of right-of-way on White, way on College Street, and 0.0221 acres of right-of-way on Westgate Avenue as part of the plat consolidating city lots 4543, 4544, and 6757, creating Wadsworth City Lot 10302 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to call the question on ordinance Number 24-099.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Yurcheck's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance Number 24-099?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 24-099 has been adopted.
Ordinance Number 24-093 on fourth reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at Committee of the Hold. An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $75,000 in the 608 Electric Fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance Number 24-093 on a fifth reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance Number 24-093 has been placed on fifth reading.
Ordinance Number 24-096. There is a public hearing set for that ordinance on October 15th, 2024, at 6:30. It's on fourth reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurcheck and discussed at Economic Development and Planning. An ordinance to amend Sections 53.16, 97.15, 150.009, 150.078, 150.081, 150.082, 153.054, 153.095, 154.540, 155.05, 155.09, 155.10, and to delete obsolete language in Sections 97.03, oh, three, and 97.32 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance Number 24-096 on fifth reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance Number 24-096 has been placed on fifth reading.
Ordinance Number 24-097 on fourth reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurcheck and discussed at Economic Development and Planning. An ordinance to establish fees for Sections 53.16, 97.15, 150.009, 150.078, 150.081, 150.082, 153.054, 153.095, 154.540, 155.05, 155.09, and 155.10 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance Number 24-097 on fifth reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance Number 24-097 has been placed on fifth reading.
And our last one is ordinance Number 24-090. There is a public hearing set for that ordinance on October 15th, 2024, at 6:30. It's on fifth reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurcheck, discussed at Economic Development and Planning. An ordinance to amend Sections 154.510, 154.511, 154.512, 154.513, 154.514, 154.518, and to delete language in Sections 154.515 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Wadsworth to update Chapter 154 Zoning Code Section titled Riparian Zone Setbacks and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance Number 24-090 on sixth reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance Number 24-090 has been placed on sixth reading. Ends of legislation. Any other business from administration?
I just want to mention on the October the 11th, Friday the 11th, the Suprema Senior Center, they're doing their 2024 Senior Expo. There's over 100 participants up there, and it's not just for senior citizens, it's for anybody. You may be taking care of an older, you know, a parent or something like that. It runs, it starts at 10 o'clock and runs until 1 o'clock. It's in the field house. You'll enter there by where WCTV is, just up from the Senior, Senior Center. So that's Friday, October the 11th.
Do you have any comment about the game this week, Mr. Rosberg?
Uh, yes. Hopefully, we will have an escort for the football team from the Art Right, or the McElveen Performing Arts Center down to Art Right, asking people to be on the street, down College Street, with posters cheering them on as they take on Nordenia. It is homecoming. It's a great night to be out, this first Friday. Also, I'd like to extend condolences to the family of former Wadsworth Police Officer and Safety Director, John Swiger. Mr. Swiger passed away this week, and he served our city many, many, many years ago. There may not be a whole lot of people that remember him, but he did serve our city, and it's just right to extend the condolences to them.
Very good. Any, anybody else? Any, anybody else?
I'd just like to remind the citizens about schools in session. Be careful of the red lights and the stop signs on the school buses. We're getting a lot of complaints and stuff, so we'll look at some stepped-up enforcement hopefully on that issue.
And the school safety zones.
Yeah, and the school safety zones.
They're 20 miles an hour, no exceptions. Nobody mentioned First Friday, but that's, you know, this Friday night?
Yeah.
You want to?
Well, yeah, First Friday, again, yeah, coming up this Friday night, there's, there'll be scarecrows down on the square, and anybody can participate in that as well, so, yeah.